Yeah, so as most of the board knows, there was a form of lack of communication during the start of this. And you know, the Fire Department has and the chiefs, been in contact with the board in regards to our opinion as far as the location and reasoning on why it's, you know, should not be where it was put. We had a meeting with the few board members and some residents involved. And there were some agreements that were made as far as the memorial what were to be done and not to be done. Not much changed. And the Fire Department standpoint is, you know, there's a history behind those memorials and monuments there. And, you know, we feel that was done is trumping the 9/11 memorial. And just, you know, the focal point of the front of the firehouse now. And there was a, you know, a lot of communication back and forth via emails from the department chiefs and companies perspective. With a letter that was sent tonight on agenda. And we feel it all could have been avoided if it was a if there was better communication. And as far as we're concerned, you know, like I said, we support it and we would love to contribute to it. We just disagree with the location of where it is. We disagree with how it was all started. It was basically, it wasn't an official village project. It was just a bunch of residents started a GoFundMe page and took it upon themselves to do, find that as the proper location.
Okay, is that it, Pat?
Yeah, that's all I got right now.
All right, thank you, Chief. I think the only other one I didn't get to was Seth Paulver. Mr. Paul, do you have anything? I'll take that as a no. Okay. So that covers public comment on agenda items. Let's move to administrative business. There you go, Kelly. Move to administrative business. Looking for a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held October 8th, 2020.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Birick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I vote aye. Approval of the abstract. I need a motion in a second to approve abstract number 10 containing vouchers 200751 through 200845 totaling $546,588.66.
Make the motion.
Trustee Birick with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jaco Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Hey, Mayor, maybe mute everybody else because I'm getting a lot of feedback from people.
Stand by.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone else is muted.
It was so clear then, we could already take the drink.
Sorry.
Okay. We now have Fire Department equipment requests. I need a motion in a second to approve Fire Department equipment request 2020-18 totaling approximately 500, excuse me, $5,892.75 for the purchase of a radio to replace the existing 911 link at Arden Tower due to the new county system. And 2020-19 totaling approximately $359.42 for the purchase of shields for officers and PPE wipes and facial masks.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jaco Mazza with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Fire Department membership applications. Need a motion in a second to accept an application for membership with the Highland Mills Fire Company for Timothy Finnegan and Jonathan Stevens. Both have successfully been administered their physicals and qualified for full interior status.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Birick with the motion. Trustee Jaco Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? I vote aye. Changing meeting dates. As we discussed last meeting, we need to change the meeting dates for the second meeting in both November and December. We run into this pretty much every year. And based on discussion last month, or excuse me, last meeting, I'm looking for a motion in a second to change the November 26th meeting to November 24th, Tuesday at 7:30 PM due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And the December 24th meeting to December 22nd at 7:30 PM due to the Christmas holiday.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item F, acceptance of resignation, is being rescinded from the agenda. There's been a change in status there, so we're going to leave that alone. Let's move on to old business, acceptance of award for water sewer truck. The public notice is printed in the Times Herald Record on September 29th, 2020. And the bid opening was held at 2:00 PM on October 20th, 2020. The following bid was received. Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Warwick in Warwick, New York for $43,842. Waste Water Administrator Mickey Phillips has reviewed the bid and recommended it be awarded. And have a motion in a second to award the bid to purchase a 2020 Ram 2500 regular cab four-wheel-drive pickup with utility body and plow to Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram for Warwick in the amount of $43,842.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Birick with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. Approval of a task order. HDR wireless telecom permit forms. I need a motion in a second to approve and authorize me, the mayor, to sign task order 2020-02 with Hensington Durham and Richardson Architect and Engineering for them to prepare and assist the Building Department to update the wireless telecom permit application forms for their administrative needs at a cost of $3,300. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jaco Mazza with the second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who was the first?
Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jaco Mazza with the second. You're welcome. Discussion? No? All in favor? And I vote aye. Okay. Update to entity disclosure form. So the entity disclosure form has been revised by Attorney Kelly Norton to address some issues that were noticed when it was being filled out by applicants. The board reviewed the amendments and agreed that they were appropriate. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the revised form?
Make the motion.
Trustee Birick with the motion. Trustee Jaco Mazza was scratching his head. I'll take that as a second. Any discussion? All in favor? And I vote aye. Okay, so now we get to the application to import fill for Mr. Paulver. So I'm going to read a bunch of stuff here and then we'll get to consultants on this. So a fill permit application was received. Lawrence Toro, project engineer with Civil Tech Engineering and Surveying on behalf of Seth Paulver for tax parcel section 202, block 172. Included with this application is a grading plan prepared by Mr. Toro. Description of procedures prepared by Brian Dreeland of AC Land Works Services dated July 9th. And correspondence from Girlling Geological Services dated July 10. Sample application form and an escrow has been posted to cover all consultant fees related to this application. The application was reviewed by the Building Department and excuse me, Building Inspector Thomasberger says the fill plan approaches on the clearing limits and should not be approved without further review by the planning board. He also feels the following items need to be addressed. The proposed map indicates the existing stream flow adjacent to that line. Reviewed by the village engineer for adequacy for soil erosion control and stormwater retention. Soil testing should indicate groundwater acceptance soil, acceptable soil analysis. The application should indicate where the soil would be imported from. You definitely need to know that. Estimated yards of import fill needs to be provided. Buried tree stumps are not permitted under the village code, but the plan calls for trees to be removed and the stumps just left there on three acres. On the acres, three acres. There should be no construction vehicles on Ice House Road. And off-site runoff from stormwater retention ponds need to be indicated. Gary Thomasberger also feels the full area appears excessive for a lot approved for a single-family dwelling. He noted further that the owner is required to secure the village board approval for non-commercial use of tree removal pursuant to section 286 of the village code. Engineer Lindsay also reviewed the application as submitted and has additional comments to add to those made by Inspector Thomasberger. So these are Dennis Lindsay's comments now. The applicant advises that it is their intent to provide a third-party inspector. Us as the board can decide to use the inspector selected by the applicant or any inspector that we want. The applicant will have to assume that cost through the escrow post. The applicant advises they'll be inspecting the materials in accordance with New York State Solid Waste. Where is that echo? Well, nowhere now. The applicant excuse me, I'm sorry. The applicant advises they are to inspecting the materials in accordance with New York State Solid Waste Regulations Part 360.12 and 360.13, which apply to beneficial use of certain fill materials. The applicant should advise the source and what beneficial use materials are to be present. Certain materials like brick, glass, et cetera, are indicative of demolition operations and could also include asbestos and other undesirable materials. They agree that the fill should be tested for residential contact and protection of groundwater per section 375-6.8B of the village code and other applicable criteria as your third-party independent inspector recommends. Table 5.4E10 of the New York State DEC DER 10 Guide should be considered for sampling frequency. If part of the operation involves timber harvesting, which they believe they will based on the application, we as a board may engage a consultant, a forester, whose fees are to be reimbursed by the applicant with that escrow fund. The work, if approved, will be complete under provisions of a special term issued by the village board after requiring a public hearing. So timber harvesting requires a public hearing. And a separate application. It's recommended the applicant provide a soil hauling plan defining the paths of truck traffic within Woodbury. This should generally use state and county roads. The local roads need to be used. The soil's movement plan should consider dust, spillage, hours of truck site work, including spreading and compacting. The plan shows a building activity up to the property lines. The property line will need to be clearly identified before operations begin to avoid unintended intrusion into neighboring property. A buffer distance of natural terrain should be considered for a parcel of this size being used for a single residential use. Additionally, this was part of the 240 lot subdivision. Many clearing limits need to be considered in the plan for development. A slope detail and compaction requirements should be shown on the plans. The proposed handling of existing topsoil should be noted. Fill should not be placed over existing topsoil or leaves. This land development activity is governed under chapter 267 Stormwater Management of the Village Code. The construction activity includes clearing, grading, soil disturbance, and placement of fill with a land disturbance greater than one acre. Accordingly, this requires the developer obtaining coverage under the Speedy's General Permit for Construction Activities GP 0-20-001. The Village Code, section 267-8, says no application for approval of a land development activity shall be reviewed until the appropriate board has received a stormwater pollution prevention plan, an SWPPT, prepared in accordance with the specifications in this chapter, which is chapter 267 of the Village Code. This may or may not require post-development quantity and quality controls, but it cannot create a new stormwater problem on the adjacent property due to a point discharge. Lastly, I'd like to note the applicant's engineer was provided a copy of the memos from both Inspector Thomasberger and Engineer Lindsay on September 29th, but no amendment to their application has been received based on these comments. Now I'd like to hear from Mr. Toro regarding any of these issues or any questions that we've raised so far. And Mr. Toro, I will find you and unmute you. Is that Larry?
Yes. But I think
Am I there?
Yep. Hi, Larry.
Good evening. As you read through the comments, obviously there's quite a bit of technical information still required. I guess at this point, what we're trying to do is get some direction on a couple of the items so that we can fine tune the plan itself. You know, there was mention of a buffer as far as exactly what that buffer is and how big you know, the dimensions of it. The issue of access off Ice House Road, not quite sure why, you know, we had indicated that we would utilize that. It would have to be improved, upgraded, et cetera, for this use. So, you know, and then also, which section of the code do we fall under? One for the fill permit or the trees, or is it, you know, basically a combination of both?
Well, as an example, if you're going to be doing tree harvesting, there's a separate section of the code that requires a separate application and a public hearing for that, just as an example. But each section of the code is referenced in the comments and this was taken from both memos from Gary and from Dennis. Does that help?
Yes, I mean, I guess yeah, I mean, the idea was that he has opportunity to obtain this fill. And in order to put it on the lot. Now I realize his issues, we still have to address as far as where the fill is coming from like that. We're just trying to get a direction on how to proceed with it. I mean, is it something, I guess with the buffers, for instance, what kind of buffers are we required to hold on this? Where originally we were shown to go into the property lines.
Well, for that, my answer would be it should be within the village code. Kelly, you have anything further on that?
On that aspect, no. I mean, there's a number of things that do need to be covered by this board, including secret would have to be done. And different elements, but I think importantly, Larry Partik is giving the board a narrative as to the purpose. I mean, what he just said is he has an opportunity to obtain this fill, but there's no reasoning that why does this need to be done? What is clearcutting seven acres? That's important information that the board is asking for and is going to want. And you need to also piggybacking on that. It's not just the other chapter. It's also the other chapter. It's the stormwater chapter. You need to take a look at the new water quality overlay district, see if that is impacted at all by this. So there's a number of things and the information that the board got really just isn't enough to proceed, even to start proceeding with secret.
Would it be possible, can Justin Kimble, he's the attorney for the application, would he be able to chime in or tune in?
I think Tim is just
I was just telling Jesus, feedback was coming from him. Who's the attorney? Justin Kimble asking to unmute now.
Thank you. So I do think, Kelly, that that information is helpful, that we do have a lot that we have to put into into the application. One of the questions that we had, and I'm currently exploring, unfortunately, I was just brought in onto this project, was the timber harvesting aspect of the 286-11. Whether or not we would fall under that or under the 286-7, if that's what we're falling under. So that was a question that Larry had brought to me.
The 286-7, is that for the non-commercial? I'm just trying to pull it up now.
That's for land development procedures?
Yeah, I think at some point I would find it very surprising if your client was clearcutting seven acres and not looking to sell that timber anywhere.
It wasn't the plan. But that may be something that if we're going to fall under 286-11 anyway, we may want to explore. So that's one of the questions we were hoping to get a little bit of direction on. They have significantly different requirements. My reading of it, on my first initial reading, is that we fall under 286-7 because we weren't planning on harvesting. But it was a site improvement that we're doing for future potential of the property.
Well, yeah, I don't think at this point you would fall under 286-7 because 286-7 is specific to where a person is developing their property as a subdivision, planned unit development, or multiple residential development. And there's been no indication that that's what is proposed nor an application down that line. So typically what we would consider this would be timber harvesting unless he's putting forth an application to the planning board as part of this, or if this is part of the winery application. And I'm not sure if it is. I'm not clear if it, but if it is, then the planning board has to get involved from that aspect as well.
Right. It's not part of that, but all right, so I'll discuss with my client and explain to him the ramifications of 286-11 and how we want to proceed under that. All right, so that's, that was certainly one of the issues. The clarification of the buffer. I think that Larry just was unclear what that quite meant that they were looking for. But if we don't have a specific answer, maybe we'll have to reach out to to the engineer, the village engineer, try to come up with an answer on that.
I think that that would be a good idea. I would reach out, I would suggest reaching out to the Building Department. And he will likely also request that you reach out to Dennis Lindsay.
Larry, oh, that's really the questions, well, other than the usage of Ice House Road, correct?
Yes, I guess that would be another issue we should discuss with Gary as well, since he brought it up.
I think so. I think if those are the questions, I would say yes, bring it up with Gary. But I think that this board is looking for a lot more detailed information, especially from an environmental standpoint before they take any action on it. And I don't know how that impacts your client. I don't know the timeframes of when this is available, but these are things that the board needs to look at.
Yeah, I think we were clear that the, what technical information you were looking for regarding soil testing and things like that other than the specific questions we had, and we can move forward with trying to give the board more detail. It was just a couple of questions that were holding us up that we're hoping to get some answers to tonight, but we'll have to talk to Gary about some of those.
Would it be appropriate for us to schedule potentially a sit-down with both Gary and Dennis to discuss these items? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, it would be very appropriate to do that. The fees for that would come out of the escrow though, right, Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
I was thinking that earlier, that a project needing for, including the building inspector Gary Thomasberger and Dennis Lindsay, and absolutely. And you guys would be appropriate.
I think we'd get more accomplished than going back and forth on emails and phone calls.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, either of the consultants have anything further?
At this time.
At this time.
Thank you, guys. Do any board members have any comments at this point that they want to make on this application? I see shaking heads.
CJ, is CJ unmuted?
CJ is unmuted, yes. All right, so with that said, it would be my recommendation to await further information from the applicant once his consultants meet with our folks and then they can complete their process and then we can take it up again on a future agenda in the near future. Does that make sense?
Yep.
We need a motion for that? We do not, right? Okay, thank you. All right, very good. So moving on to new business then. Somebody have, excuse me?
I was just saying thank you to the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kimble.
Good night.
Good night, Larry. So improvement, excuse me, approve improvement to village property that beautification handles. So I need a motion in a second to approve the Town of Woodbury Beautification Committee to continue to improve and maintain the Island at Buena Vista Terrace, the War Memorial at Oak Grove, and the Memorial at Peroni Circle as they've continued to do so since prior to the creation of the village.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Birick with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion?
That is just allowing them to work on the property?
Correct. So this is covered in the IMA and the Beautification Committee from the town, which gets funded partially by them, partially by the Home Depot sign. We're just formalizing the process to allow them to continue to do that. They've always been doing it, but we just want to make it as part of the formal process. Any other comments or thoughts on this? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, so now we have to approve an improvement to village property, the Memorial at Village Hall. So recently, a memorial consisting of a tree, bench, large rock formation, plantings, and river rock were placed at the north driveway entrance of Village Hall in front of the firehouse. This was funded by a group that raised money to dedicate a garden as a memorial to two prominent members of the community in recognition of all they do and have done for Woodbury over the years. This process was assisted by trustee Jaco Mazza. Correspondence regarding this garden was received from members of the Highland Mills Fire Company stating they are concerned with the placement of the garden of the garden blocks that it blocks, excuse me, two distinct memorials that are currently adjacent to the sign. One to honor all deceased members of the fire company and the other for the victims of 9/11. They do not object to the intent of the garden, but do feel that the location is not ideal. And they state they were not consulted about the location or the design of the garden memorial. They request that a new location be considered and adding that they will assist financially for the cost relocation. So now what we'll do is we'll have some board discussion on this before we vote on this. And if it's okay, I'll go first. So my thoughts are that the memorial outside the driveway entrance is beautiful. I'd like to recognize the personal efforts of Joe from Orange Nursery. On his own time, he designed and implemented the memorial we're discussing. And it's my understanding he provided all of the materials at his own, at cost. The combined efforts of We Are Woodbury, trustees Jaco Mazza and Gomez, Maria Hunter, and Kate Luciani and many others resulted in a wonderful memorial to a great pair of community individuals. The problem, as I see it, is a lack of communication or poor communication regarding the project during the process. Since the memorial was done, there's been two meetings that I'm aware of or that I was invited to regarding this project. These meetings involve members of the We Are Woodbury Group, including trustee Jaco Mazza, Joe from Orange Nursery, the Woodbury Fire Chiefs, as well as the president of Highland Mills Fire Company. These people along with myself represent what I would consider stakeholders in this project or anything like this. All of the stakeholders should have been fully aware of everything that was planned, including written plans and drawings, before anything was done. This board tonight is being asked to vote to approve something that's already completed, as we all know. So I agree with the sentiment that a memorial to a private citizen should not be placed near or in front of the Fire Department memorials honoring deceased members of the Fire Department, and especially having anything to do with 9/11. I've spoken to many individuals from both the department as well as the general public about this, including members of the aforementioned groups. And I have to stand in support of my friends and brothers in the Fire Department against the location, but not the memorial. That's my opinion. I think it's beautiful. I just think it's in the wrong place. So let's go out to the rest of the board. Why don't we start with Chris?
I don't think it blocks anything. I think it adds to the beauty of Village Hall and I think it's perfectly fine where it is.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Actually, let me finish one thing. Actually, I think the one thing that does not fit outside of that piece of property is the sign. I think the sign is the most ostentatious thing that's out there. So I think beautifying the area was a good thing.
Okay. Trustee Gomez.
Me?
Yeah, we're up to you. Do you have anything?
I also agree that I think it's in a great spot. It attracts attention to the firehouse, it's also into the memorial. It doesn't take away from any. I think you purposely made the bench itself open end on both sides so that you can turn and pay respects to that. That way not taking away from what it is and the beauty. And most of the time if you're driving by, you're not even noticing if you don't slow down. You see a big skinny little tree by there. You stop, you see it, you see the beauty and the love that was put into it for our community, not just for the particular person who has done beyond for this community. But for all. So I don't see it as a problem. It only added to the, especially that area. And it's fine where it is.
Okay, next, Jesus. Tara?
Yeah, I agree with both Chris and Jesus. I think, you know, we, Chris and I went on Saturday to look at it. I think it, it's beautiful and I think it adds a lot to the entranceway to both the firehouse and also Village Hall. You know, it was my understanding, Tim, I know you read the statement just now about what was included. It was my understanding that the initial goals were going to only be the bench and the tree and that the garden was added after the fact, after you had a meeting with the Fire Department and there was buy-in on all sides. It might incorrect in that.
Well, first of all, I didn't have the meeting. The meeting was set up by trustee Jaco Mazza. I was invited to the meeting and I moderated the meeting. So yes, but to answer the second part of your question, on that Monday evening, it was agreed to by all three chiefs of the Fire Department, the president of the Fire Company, trustee Jaco Mazza, Kate, and Joe. I don't think there was anybody else there besides me. It was agreed to by all parties that that would happen, yes.
Okay, so I Okay, so, I understand the sentiment coming from the fire department. I do, and I empathize. I just think the time to, to, would have been at that time, not after Joe completed the work. And I think i- it comes at a tremendous expense. I, I understand the fire department is willing to foot, to, to pay for it and to chip in with the labor. I, I just, I, I, I think that, that that money can be used on other things. I, I really do think it adds so much to the front of Village Hall. And I, I just, you know, when you make an agreement, and that, I understood from all parties involved. I got a couple of conflicting stories, but by and large, the majority said that's Monday night on October eleventh, you all walked out, and Tim, you asked multiple times, are we all in agreement with this? If that is, if that is true, okay, and I heard that from multiple people, I have to, I have to say that we should leave it where it is.
Not only is that true, Tara, what I had asked was that when we leave here, we stand shoulder to shoulder with the same message, moving forward. Uh, and that's what happened. Now, uh, you know, I know that later on during department head comment, or, or in public comment, Chief Brazillo can, you know, respond to, to any of this. Um, but there were some changing of minds after that. Now, I, you know, okay, I, I just want to answer your question.
I just think for the amount of effort Joe put into this on his own time.
I, and I, I fully recognize that, absolutely. Joe did a, a, a lot of work that, you know, he wouldn't normally have done, and this was from his heart, and, uh, he did a great job with it. I totally agree.
So I'm, I'm gonna have to say leave it where it is.
Okay, uh, so you're good. You're done?
Done.
Okay, trustee Gomez?
He's, oh.
I'm sorry, you just speak. My apologies, trustee.
The other G.
The other G.
The other G. Uh, so, um, I, I, of course, will be saying it needs to stay where it is. Um, I think that this project was done with the utmost respect for our fire department. Uh, I approached them, uh, to ask them about this project because, out of respect to them, um, it's not required, as you know, it's village property, but I have always been respectful and supportive of our fire department. Um, in, in a larger note, I feel like this is the project that kind of started this whole We Are Woodbury movement, where people are now, uh, running around Woodbury to clean and beautify, or gorgeousification, or gorgeousify, whatever you want to call it. And it really began from this small little piece of dirt at the bottom of the driveway here. So, um, I think it's very respectful. Uh, I have a lot of, of, what do you call it? I hate to use the same word again, rather than respect for our volunteer firemen. Um, they put their lives on the line for our community. But, uh, at the end of the day, I think it just, just brings more attention to the nine eleven memorial, more attention to Village Hall, more attention to the fire department, and with that said, I would say it should stay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Chief Brazillo wants to speak. Uh, he is a department head. Would it be okay with the board if I allow him to speak now, or, or, or would you like him to speak later in public comment?
Speak now.
Okay, I, I thought so too. I just.
Yeah, Pat.
Yeah, Pat, I just unmuted you.
Thank you, Ian. So, uh, since I've been involved with this from day one, when we broke, when they broke ground with starting this memorial, um, just to backtrack, early August, um, from, uh, Andrew, there was a text sent, very vague, about the, a bench and a tree, no further discussion. Next minute I know, back in, what was it, maybe late September, October, I don't even remember when they started this, they were digging up the grass area, not dirt, as it was referred to, to start this. And, uh, that's how this all came about. So, you know, the, I, I, I just, I don't appreciate right now how the nine eleven memorial is being brought into this, when there was no intent for this to be affiliated with the nine eleven memorial. That's number one. Number two is, there should have been plans and discussion, um, about where and what was going to exactly happen. As far as our meeting that we had, I believe it was on the eleventh. Yes, we did have a meeting for about an hour and forty-five minutes. And upon leaving the meeting, Tim did confirm with everybody, we were on the same page. And the agreement was that they were going to scale back on the original plan. And if you look at the original plan, and you look at what was completed now, nothing was scaled back. It was actually additional that was added. So, three out of the five board members already referred to that building as Village Hall. If, if it's a matter of it being Village Hall and not the firehouse, then so be it. There's nothing we can do. We cannot contest with five, or four, or three village board members, however you want to put it. There was poor communication on this. I have been waiting to this day for Andrew to at least come forward and admit that there was poor communication. That has not, not happened once with all of our meeting. Everyone just keeps referring to it. But it was a good intent that in so many ways went bad. And, you know, like I said the other day, when we were all speaking about it, if, h- how can residents just decide to go and start this project and do it illegally? No insurance, no underground, not consulting with the village board, not, because this was not a village board project. This was just a couple residents with a village board or two members involved in it. It had nothing to do with the village board. So, that's no different than residents running a GoFundMe page and deciding to dig a hole at the rez and do some type of, you know, uh, memorial goose pond, whatever you want to do up there. It's no different. Um, you know, the firemen take care of that building. We used to mow the lawn and plow the sidewalks with the snow blower, and we were told not to do it because of liability. But yet, we can just come and erect this, you know, garden area, which is beautiful, don't get me wrong, and we support it a hundred percent. It just does not belong on that piece of property. And as much as, you know, everyone might not want to hear it, when we refer to other locations and why it should be at other locations, we were told the village is not getting along with the town, so that's why it's on the village property, so we are stuck with it. And at the end of the day, we are told it's a village building. So if it's a village building, we cannot contest when that, and I guess it's stuck there, and there's nothing we can do. But you do have fifty-five firemen that are pretty upset and insulted with the plan, with the location, and with how this all went done, down, when we do have our history of our department out there, along with the two nine eleven memorials. Those memorials were strategically placed so that they were in line with each other to show respect, so that one wasn't, you know, looked at more than the other, because it's our history, our fallen members, and beyond. And, eh, you know, as much as this memorial was done for a great reason and a great person, we support that, there was just no affiliation with the fire company. So it does not belong on that piece of property. And again, we support it. We are in favor of it. It's an amazing gesture. We would have loved to have contributed towards it, since it's on the village property, since we're referring to it now. But when I met with Tara and CJ on Saturday, because I was part of that meeting as well, which she failed to mention, you know, it was the firehouse. But now in conversation tonight, it's the Village Hall. So I just.
Pat, I refer to it as both. I said it is also, it is the fire department, and it is also the gateway to Village Hall.
Yeah, the Village, the Village Hall is located in the back. We've been in that building since nineteen ninety-seven. We've run that building since nineteen ninety-seven, and now, obviously, there's been a change, so now we, the village board has the building. I, I get that. And, you know, this by no means should end up being a political thing, which is just something that we feel is happening because it's so close to the election. It doesn't belong there. And when we walked out of the meeting and we made the agreement to scale back, nothing was done. Our agreement were, was disregarded, and as a matter of fact, there was a few other additional things that were done. There's, there's a plaque that is not mounted on a rock there. That is the only thing out of the original plan that was not done. Aside from that, that is the exact plan to the T. So yes, we did have a meeting, and none of our agreements and wishes and questions and requests were addressed once this was completed three days later. So, again, I'd like to leave off in a final note. The fire company, the department, and the chiefs, we support the idea. We are not in favor of where it goes. I have nothing else to say on this matter.
Thank you, chief. Okay, so that covers all of the board members. I do have one clarification to an earlier point that I made. Uh, Mrs. Hunter wanted me to say, and I got this in the Zoom chat, that the beautification committee and Maria Hunter were not involved in this particular memorial. They were involved in the other stuff. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clarification. Andrew, trustee Jacque Amazza?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak. I'm gonna re, the rebuttal to his comments. Let me start by saying, I spoke to Chris Burke, and Chris Burke is, what is he, second?
Card two.
What is, okay. I spoke to Chris Burke on the phone. The text message, I never sent the text message until Chris Burke had gotten approval from your guys about this project, okay? So that's first off. The communication was there. Second of all, I spoke to every trustee and the mayor about this project. If there was any confusion, it was about the location. But I did say it was at the bottom of the driveway there. Uh, third off, the meeting that we had at Village Hall, the second meeting, was over, it was almost three hours that I was in that building for. Uh, we left that table and everybody was in agreement. If you went back to the fire company and then got, you, they felt that you didn't do enough to change this project, that's not on us. Because the mayor was quite clear that, are we all in agreement with this? And we were, okay? Your dad was out there when Joe was finishing the work, and he was commenting on how good it looked. We were talking about cor, connecting this memorial with everything else that is out there, to beautify it. And I gotta agree with CJ. That sign is horrendous. It's hideous. You could see it from outer space. And that was done without any kind of village approval. That was done without planning board approval. And that's what it needed, okay? Um, what else do I say? So in terms of calling you back, I will not call you back if you want to send me threatening texts. And I have no problem reading them right now, if you'd like, from you, your dad, okay, about this. Um, quite honestly, that meeting that we had at Village Hall, I was pretty sickened by some of your comments. Uh, particularly that this woman has done nothing that she hasn't been paid for. Honestly, really. So, I mentioned in that meeting also that this is Village Hall. It's village property. It is the taxpayers' property. We represent the taxpayers. It looks perfectly fine out there. Your first argument was the fact that you thought it was blocking the sign. It wasn't blocking the sign. Then it became the nine eleven memorial, okay? So, I get it. We talked about making it, just making sure it would be respectful, alright? I wanted no issues with the fire department, Pat, and we talked about things that we can do otherwise, that were issues that you guys had with, um, the upstairs hall and everything else like that. So we were trying, or I was trying to work with you on this. So.
Andrew, that's irrelevant to this right now. There's nothing.
No, you know what? It's not, Pat. You know why?
It is.
Because you've just been insulting this entire time. If you think I did this for an election. If you think I did this for an election, you're completely wrong. It's not gonna be unveiled. It's nothing. Okay, I don't do anything in this town for an election.
Andrew, see, like, you, you're, you're taking a lot of our discussion out of content here, because not once did, I'll be the first one to tell you, it looks beautiful. I have no problem with it. It looks amazing. Joe is phenomenal at what he does. He's a professional. It does not belong at the firehouse. That's all I'm saying. It, I don't get where you're going off on, you know, it not looking good. It looks wonderful. It just does not belong dead square in front of the firehouse. That's all. We have firemen that have committed their entire life to this town back then, town before it was a village, seventy-plus years, that have long, long medical issues because of being firemen in nine eleven, that do not have memorials and monuments out front. We have a member that just passed two years ago that does not have something like that out front. We have other things that we do. It's almost like, i- it's like the sacred ground of the firemen. That's all we have memorial-wise, besides our fireman memorial down at the cemetery. So, y- you know, that's, that's one of the reasons on, of many, on why it should not belong there. But again, if it's a matter of bringing facts to the table, you sat there in conversation and said you don't get along with the town. That's why you can't approach them about putting it on town property.
But we also said, Pat, that she's not gonna walk up to the dog park. She's not, it's just not gonna do that, Pat. It just, it just.
But Andrew, we can't strategically place memorials all around town based on somebody's driving pattern. You can't do that.
Alright.
You can't do that.
I want to put a hole to this. I don't want this to get even further out of hand, so.
Yep.
Uh, does any board member have any final comments on this?
No, let's just vote.
Just vote.
Thank you, Chris. So, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the creation of the memorial at the south driveway entrance to, uh, to Village Hall.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Amazza with the motion, and I think trustee Gomez with the second. Desiree, can you do a roll call, please? Oh, yeah. Yeah, there you go.
You still muted.
So.
There we go.
Better? Okay, and just to correct, that was a north entrance, to, north driveway entrance. I typed south, and I'm sorry, that was a typo. Um, we're gonna do a roll call.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Egan.
Uh, regretfully, I'm gonna vote no.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Jacque Amazza.
Yes.
Trustee Gomez. Trustee Graziano.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Moving on. We have a business associate agreement for Marshall and Sterling for HIPAA protection. I need a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the business associate agreement with Marshall and Sterling as it relates to HIPAA protection. This is required under federal laws. It imposes special duties that require any party's handling PHI, or Protected Health Information, to do so in the context of the former written agreement, otherwise known as a business associate agreement. Marshall and Sterling is the village's agent for the employer's dental insurance policy, which is why we need this. Sending a motion and a second, please.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, I heard trustee Graziano's voice, and I saw a hand from trustee Burick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Alright, so now we have a discussion about parkland fees.
Wait, before you start, Tim, uh, somebody put on Facebook, a member of the parks committee, Sue Lynch is waiting in the waiting room.
Oh, I don't see a Sue Lynch in the waiting room. I see a Michael's iPhone.
Oh, that's her husband. I don't know.
I see another iPhone, uh, that's unlabeled. I repeatedly asked.
Okay.
Alright, you know what? I'll, I'll, I'll let them in, and if we have a problem, I'll immediately discharge them from the meeting. But I had sent several meetings, several messages, uh, to the waiting room to please, uh, fully identify yourself before being admitted to the meeting. Okay, thank you for that. So, uh, the IMA was changed back in twenty fourteen with agreement by both the town and the village boards at that time to eliminate the language stating that the fees would be payable to and administered by the town. After checking with council, this is not an oversight and specifically desired by the village back in twenty fourteen and now, the village board agreed early in the year to begin enforcing that language change. I wrote a memo to the building inspector advising him of this on April twenty-ninth of this year. We intend to use accumulated parkland fees to obtain property for parks in Woodbury. It's important to note that New York State law states parkland fees collected by the village are restricted funds that are only to be used to purchase or obtain parkland and/or to make certain improvements to the existing parkland, like capital projects. They are not allowed to be used to operate and/or maintain parkland. The town, for example, cannot use parkland fees to provide for maintenance of the parks or pay salaries. Year-to-date, we've collected forty-five thousand five hundred dollars in parkland fees. It's almost the end of October. Assuming a total town budget of about twelve million dollars, and I think that's pretty close, that represents about zero point three seven five percent of the total town budget, less than one-half of one percent. If the town board is claiming that they need to raise taxes by ten or twelve percent because the village board is withholding parkland fees, then they need to check their math. Also, I find it ironic that the town board criticized us for making decisions on this in attorney-client session, but immediately went into an attorney-client session of their own to discuss this very issue. It, it has been suggested to me that we may have made this decision in retribution for the bond payment we are reimbursing the town for as part of the lawsuit settlement. That's simply not the issue, and I can tell you why. This decision was made in the beginning of the year back on February twenty-seventh, as part of a large meeting that we had. Supervisor Palermo and I had not yet finalized the details of the settlement, which included reimbursement of the bond payment that we subsequently brought back to our respective boards. As a result, we as a village board could not have used this information with which to make that decision. So that's my comment on that. Uh, go out to the rest of the board, but start with trustee Graziano.
Alright, thank you, Tim. I appreciate that. Uh, I kind of agree with, um, Tim's sentiments on this. Um, I'm gonna say this, parkland fees were never voted on by anyone in, in any public meeting or any attorney-client. I'm gonna say that unequivocally. You know, there was a couple, some of us are new, and we had a question to the, our attorneys, and we're new to the process, and seen the IMA for the first time. What are the?
What are the parkland fees and what is behind them and what are they for? The council answered the question and the mayor wrote a memo back in April 29th based on the law and the IMA interpretation by village council. I, as a board member, just assumed Tim communicated this to the supervisor shortly thereafter and I'd be honest with you, I've never given another thought since the April 29th memo. To suggest things are being done secretly is not only comical, but an insult. This board is bent over backwards to be the most transparent board in the history of this town or village. We stream our meetings on both Zoom and Facebook Live. We have not one, but two public comments sections in the meetings and we also answer questions from that Facebook Live feed. This is opposed to not allowing any public comments unless written up until two meetings ago by some others. This is not a popularity contest, it is a public service and I believe we should all be acting as consummate professionals and not making insinuations against other people in this town or village. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chris, trustee Gomez.
Come back to me, my computer's acting up.
Good thing, trustee Beer.
Yeah, thank you. This village board has very ambitious goals, for those paying attention. One of those goals, for those who may have heard me say it a dozen, lots of times, is, is land preservation. And one of the permitted uses under a land preservation plan is the purchasing of land to be used as new parks and/or recreational facilities. Under the law, the planning board has the authority to collect fees in lieu of parkland from a developer and the village has the authority to purchase the land with the intent to use it as parkland. The town had been erroneously collecting these fees since 2014, but what's done from 2014 till nine, until now is done and, and moving forward, we as a village will have a use for this money in places where it's desperately needed within our community. And contrary to what was said at last week's town board meeting, this was an oversight that was caught upon, that was caught when we had, when CJ and I had our quote unquote village board orientation on, back on February 27th with Rick Golden and the entire board. And Rick is our, was our attorney along with Kelly. No vote was taken, as CJ said, in the attorney-client meeting and all that was done was to restore the collection of monies to the village, which are legally the village under the current intermunicipal agreement, apparently in effect between both boards. And the last thing I, I wanna say is, I don't, and I struggle with this and I struggle to understand why every issue that arises between the town and the village has to be so contentious. I don't, I don't understand it, I really don't. We're all neighbors and they said this through elections, through campaigns, through everything. And, you know, I said this in my comments when we bought, voted on the lawsuit settlement, that if someone on either board has an issue with a decision made by one of the boards, I don't understand why you can't pick up the phone and, and talk about it. We, as a board, are incredibly reasonable despite what has been said about us. Many of us are business people and we're presented with disagreements in our workday, day in and day out. Do we go about solving these disagreements by making accusations at the parties involved? Absolutely not. And I extend everyone the benefit of the doubt and I initiate a conversation to attempt to reach a compromise. There is nothing about this situation that was done improperly. Instead, all that was done was to correct the mistake that had been going on for years. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Tara, trustee Gomez.
I agree with Tara said. Whenever we make a decision, it is always the wrong decision according to everyone else. We are trying to do this for the community itself. We have our own land preservation committee, which maybe we will, that'll lead us to building up parks for, under the village. And by law, this money is to stay by us because the IMA was not renegotiated, which was set to the village back after two thousand, December of 2014, it automatically renewed. So, under that, it states that we are allowed to keep the park fees when and if we decide that we need to produce parkland. So, there's nothing, yes, that we have in, in. We're trying to do this for the community and for everyone. We're not taking it from one to give to the other, it only benefits still the same community. I don't see it as a problem. And if it's being done legally, we got sued because they said it wasn't done properly. Well, now we're clarifying it. We're putting it on paper and we, we can read it right off the IMA and the law of the state's, New York State law, which says that the, those parkland fees. And it shouldn't have been used the way it was, that is not us to say. What's done is done. We, we now want to correct it and therefore there is no harm with us using it for what is intended.
Thank you, Jesus, trustee Jacomaza.
So I didn't write anything down like, like Tara did. But I, I just think that it just grinds my gears that every time we do anything, it comes over the, it becomes sort of made to look like we are working against our own taxpayers. Or we're doing something malicious, and that's not the case. It's not the case since I've been on this board. In fact, I think if anybody watched the last town board meeting, I was pretty much thrown under the bus. The bus was driven over me, then it was backed up over me, then it was driven over me again, and so forth. This was done by, by us because we have a specific vision for what we want our Woodbury, your Woodbury to look like. Which means that we want walking trails and paths for our residents because that's what they want. We want more parkland, parks in, in Woodbury. We feel we can accomplish that. This is money that's generated through the COs that are issued. And what we're doing is we're just redistributing it for what we feel is a long-term plan that we have, that we want to enact. And that's the fight of us. So, anybody saying it's anything more, if it's, you know, oh, it's about the litigation or if it's about the bond payment or anything else like that, no, it's not. Because this money is really, it's not to be used for maintenance. If that's what the, if that's what's been going on, it's not supposed to be used for that. We plan on using it properly. And hopefully the residents of Woodbury will see the fruits of what we are trying to plant right now. So, that's all I gotta say on this.
Thanks, Andrew. I think I covered all the board members on this. We do not need to vote on this for anything, correct, Kelly? You good?
That's correct.
Guys, you good?
Yes.
Okay, so that concludes regular business. At this point, we'll go out to public comment. I'm gonna unmute everybody, but I'll call one at a time on the folks that are in the audience. So I'm just gonna go down the list, let's start with Mr. Gerber.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris. Mrs. Kraus?
No, thank you.
Okay. I have iPhone. Okay. I have Kate Luccianni, I assume. Okay, Mrs. Hunter?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thanks, Maria. The names just moved around on me, my apologies. Yeah, who's that?
It's Maria again, I wanna, I'm sorry, I just wanna thank the board for acknowledging the beautification committees efforts in maintaining the, the three circles within the village-town area. So thank you for approving that and continuing that.
You're welcome. Mr. Higgins. Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, good evening, Ray, how are you?
Good evening, guys, how's it going? This is my first time doing a Zoom, so it was difficult for me logging in earlier today. I have, I have a few comments to make. One, with regards to the park, parkland fees. I serve in the parks committee. And the thing that I'm a little confused about is, back in April, or before that, when the village decided to take away the park feeds, how, how was this done, an executive session, a client attorney session?
No, it was, we, we not, this board has not yet had an executive session of any kind. We've only had attorney-client sessions periodically throughout the year. As Chris Graziano, trustee Graziano mentioned earlier, back on February 27th, we had our attorney for the village, Rick Golden, come in and do a training session for all board members, but specifically for new board members with regard to everything as to how the board functions, responsibilities of trustees, responsibilities of the mayor, who can do what, legislation that we were looking at for the rest of the year, a schedule of local laws and, and the IMA, there were questions about the IMA and in this, on this in particular. So all of these things were discussed during that February 27th meeting and this is the direction we went.
Okay, now, with, with that said, is there a reason why the board didn't put this on a public agenda for the community to be aware of your decision to stop the parkland fees?
There was no reason to put it on a public agenda when the decision was made back in 2014.
I, I understand that, but from 2014 to 2019, the village was handing over parkland fees to the town.
In ever?
Well, I mean, you, you could say ever, you could say. The fact of the matter is, is that these fees were handed over to the town from 2014 to 2019 and then it was decided this year that you guys were not gonna do it and no one was informed that this, that this was happening, not even the parks committee. I've been serving in the parks committee since January of this year and I could tell you that we were not informed that these fees were gonna be canceled by the village, which is very disappointing. Especially since we all know that the John Burke pool is in the process of, of, of being redone and certainly that project, that's all under that will be allocated to do capital improvements for the community.
Let me comment on that for a second, Ray, if I may, with regard to the pool. So first of all, you guys, the town rather, took out a five million dollar bond, or just under a five million dollar bond, and we're talking about forty five thousand five hundred dollars year to date. That's a, about a tenth, less than a tenth of a percent of that total five million dollar bond as it relates to cash. Second of all, our highway department has been working very closely with the town parks and rec and provided so far about a hundred and forty hours, if I'm not mistaken, right, Rob? You can not, okay, so about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty hours of manpower, loaders, equipment, moving dirt, moving equipment and things of that nature to help offset the costs to the town. And that was based on the conversation that the supervisor and I had, that Rob and, and the Parks and Recs folks had. And we worked cooperatively to try and minimize costs to the town. So I just want you to keep those facts in mind as you, you know, continue to, please go ahead.
Rightfully noted and, and we, and we thanked the highway department and the leadership of Rob for the work, the wonderful work that they've been doing with the John Burke pool. With that said, I know that a few trustees mentioned that you guys are gonna be holding on to this money for future purchases of, of, of parklands. We have three parks in the town of Woodbury. Is the village planning on bringing in a fourth park to the town, to the village?
We've not discussed any specific plans with regard to that, no.
Okay, so where, so I'm assuming the money is gonna just be put in a fund where it's not gonna be used?
Yes, it's required by law to be put in a trust fund solely to be used for parklands.
Okay.
Or recreational uses, yes.
Alright, well, as far as, as far as the parkland issue is concerned, that, that's all I have. I, I, I just, before I leave my comments, I just wanna make a final, a final comment. With regard, with regards to the nine eleven memorial, even though I appreciate the gesture that the village board is doing in recognizing citizens of Woodbury, I, I think that using the nine eleven memorial area is sacred ground and I'm very surprised that there's a village board member who's a retired police officer of the NYPD and I'm very disappointed that he would agree.
Easy, Jesus.
Hey, do me a favor.
I'm very disappointed.
Do not speak for me.
We.
Do me a favor, don't speak for me, I speak for myself, thank you very much.
I'm talking, Mr. Gomez, thank you. I'm very disappointed that he would agree with having this project next to a nine eleven memorial. It's like someone going to Ground Zero and wanting to plant a, a memorial for another group. You just don't do that. And I, I wished that the village board would have taken this up on a public hearing or maybe put in an, on the agenda for the public to come and give their opinion on this. I understand that this is village property, but that nine eleven memorial is a sacred area that shouldn't be touched and it should only be recognized for first responders and nine eleven responders. And I think it's a big mistake for this board to have voted to, to have this done, even though I understand it was already done before even the vote took place. So that's my opinion. I'm pretty sure that a lot of first responders in this community would agree with me that as a first responder myself, a nine eleven responder, you just don't do that. There could have been other places where, where, where this project could have been placed. I think it's a great idea. And I, I looked at this location and it's very beautiful. I just think that it shouldn't be placed where the nine eleven memorial is currently. Thank you.
Two things.
Wait, hold on.
One, excuse me for one second, Jesus. So, so Ray, two things. One, we're not required to have a public hearing for anything close to this, but we do have public comment on agenda items, which was the time to speak to us with regard to your opinion on this, or would have been a time to speak to us with regard to your opinion on this prior to the board taking a vote on that. The second thing I wanted to respond to was, you had mentioned that the town was not notified about our decision with regard to withholding parkland fees. And you're right, I'll be honest with you and be honest with everybody, never thought that to even do that. I wrote a memo to the building inspector at the time, we had about six or eight grand of, of fees, something like that. I could, I don't know exactly what it was. It's a very small amount, honestly didn't think it was a big deal. Never thought I needed to reach out to Frank to talk about that. And I could have during many conversations that we had during the negotiation for the lawsuit settlement. So that's on me, that's not on anybody else on the board. I simply didn't think of it. So, we're gonna move on. Matt, I see.
Wait a minute, hold on.
I'm sorry, Jesus, you wanted to say something.
Yes, because I was directly.
Apologies, go ahead.
Well, first of all, that piece of property is not in front of the memorial. It's on the side patch outside from, away from the sign. So therefore it's not in front of the memorial. And as I stated earlier, I made it, I made it purposely, without a backing on that, so that people can turn around and sit there if they can't stand for too long a period to look at the memorial, do a prayer for it. They can sit there also. So that memorial, that placement there was not just for that one person, it was done for everyone. Everyone complained about how beautiful, just said how beautiful it is, perfect. Well, it was, the plaque was in place there, so it's not dedicated technically to anyone because it's not gonna have a plaque. A person can turn around and pray all they want, give the proper respect to them, no one was taken away from that. As a responder, on nine eleven there, I only saw it as a plus. Where I could now come at quiet time and look at it and have my thoughts focused on what it is and have that surrounding and that beauty with me. So there, that is why I had no problem with it as a first, as a first responder. I had no problem at all with it. It did not take away. I had no problem at all with it, it did not take away from that 9/11 or the memorial for the firemen. I had no problem agreeing with it.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Ray, did you have anything else on any other topics before we move on? I assume not, you're already muted, okay. So, Willa Freiband had her hand up for quite a while, your arm must be very tired, so please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I wanna put aside all that personal feelings and the history that I've been listening to, because I don't think that that's really the issue here. Everyone, I believe, is trying to work on behalf of the community. I take everybody's interests to heart, but looking forward, trying to work together. A couple of things are happening this year. We have the pool that has to be rebuilt, and we have COVID, we have a huge amount of challenges because of 2020 and everything that has come together. So, there's a huge desire to reopen the pool. And the pool water area will be smaller. There'll be a huge amount of area around it that our building department is not working on. Now, we know the pool's a huge attraction for Woodbury. I just wanna know if you guys would reconsider revisiting this issue. You know, let's show the community we can work together collaboratively. So, I am asking you to look at those parkland fees for 2020 to help us make sure that we can get the water area, which is part of the bond, done and taken care of, and that's separate from this, but also to be able to fill in the grounds around it so that when we open, it's a habitable place for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Willa, anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Higgins indicated he would like to speak up, Matt, did you please go ahead?
Hi, thank you, I have two questions, and then I have a war hero that I would like to speak after me, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I wanted to see if any of the trustees or the mayor has seen the application, the recent application, increasing the depth of the pit into the water table.
I assume you're talking about space site?
Right.
Kelly, do we have anything? I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything new, no.
It's not an application to us, so unless we were CC'd by the DEC or the applicant, we wouldn't have any way of being aware of it.
Okay. I also would like to see if any of the board members have seen the quarry operation or the surrounding lands that represents very large property on our equator. I would like to see if anybody has actually, you know, viewed it.
I have not, but you and I have discussed taking a walk around that perimeter and on your property and seeing how it affects you, and I would still like to do that before the snow flies.
Call me tomorrow.
I will.
Okay.
I will, maybe over the weekend we can do that.
Great. Now, the other thing is, I wanted to mention this again, the village is not a state facility. An edict by the governor to fly the flag at half-mast has gone on for nine months now. It will continue by the state indefinitely. We don't know or have any idea when the edict will end. And it's a state, it's not, we're a village, we're not a state building, and our grounds shouldn't have to have a flag at half-mast. I don't think you should abide by that. And next, I would like to go to a dear friend of mine, it's like a son to me, who's a war hero, and he would like to speak, he's right here with me now, Mr. Fardusi, please.
Hey, how you doing, board members, tonight?
Good evening.
My name is Amadi Fardusi, for the record, Purple Heart Valor recipient. I found myself in you guys' beautiful town, and I found myself wondering, why is it that some flags are up and some flags are half-mast? I was wondering why everybody's not on the same page in this town.
Well, we can only speak for village buildings, and I can tell you that, as Matt alluded to a few minutes ago, there had been an executive order by the governor earlier in the year, quite a few months ago, directing that flags be flown at half-mast in honor of COVID patients or COVID victims that had died within the state. That executive order has not been rescinded. And as a village, we typically follow state edicts and state executive orders with regard to flags and whether or not they're at half-mast. Understanding and recognizing, as Matt pointed out, that we are not a state facility, but we do abide by those rules.
Are you guys not planning on changing that or pushing a motion forward to raise the flags at all?
Well, I'll tell you what, sir, I'm sorry, I forgot your name already, my apologies.
Mr. Fardusi.
Mr. Fardusi, I'll tell you what I will do. I will reach out to our local elected officials to try and work with the governor to try and reverse that. Is that fair enough?
I very much appreciate that, thank you, sir.
My pleasure, thank you for your service.
Service, your support.
You can't be too patriotic, you know, it's not a bad thing.
Thank you for that, Matt, you have anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Matt, thank you. I don't think there's anybody that I missed here, I'm just looking down, Roberta Burke? Roberta Burke, going once, going twice? Okay, I believe that's everybody that was from the public that wanted to speak, so. Now, a little board member comments.
This thumbs up.
Beg your pardon, oh?
iPhone.
iPhone would like to say something, all right, well, iPhone, you've not identified yourself.
I think it's too, Lynch.
Okay, go ahead, I just unmuted iPhone.
I'm so sorry for, hi, this is Susan Lynch, I'm so sorry for being unidentified, I will fix that.
Susan, before you get started, I do have a message on my desk to phone you. I got it, it came in here at 4:00 PM, I wasn't in the office until a little later on in this office, so.
That was from two days ago. Oh, that's okay, I think I've gotten a lot of information already tonight.
I think it was from yesterday, actually.
Okay, perhaps, yep.
That's what I, okay, good.
I just wanna express my appreciation for your transparency and for your forward-thinking vision and planning for the future. I don't feel it's my place as a member of the newly-formed Advisory Committee for the Parks and Rec Department to comment on the resolution or what I hope might be a resolution for the dispersment of the parkland fees. I just hope that the village and the town can somehow find a way to work together in order to serve the community in the best way possible, and that's it.
I appreciate that, and I can tell you that, you know, we've been, you know, look, I've been communicating with the supervisors throughout the year. And as I mentioned earlier, the, I see you there, Sandy. The town, excuse me, the highway department has been working with Parks and Rec and providing quite a bit of work for them and working with them, and that was done in cooperation between myself and the supervisor and the department heads. Obviously, this is something I'm sure we'll talk about moving forward again. So, we do take your comments under advisement, you have anything else? You already muted yourself, so I'm assuming now. Okay, Sandy Capriglioni, just unmuted you.
Hi, Tim, hi, trustees. I just wanted to clarify a few things over these parkland fees. I believe it was actually Acting Supervisor Palermo that signed the 2014 IMA that made the change to the parkland fees, is that correct?
I was wondering about that myself, Kelly might have the answer.
Yes, it was signed by Mayor Mike Queenen and Deputy Enacting Supervisor Frank Palermo.
So, in fact, Supervisor Palermo shouldn't have been so surprised. I mean, he's been keeping those fees without uttering a word about it. And now, after watching the board meeting the other night, he, you know, not only was he, did he seem surprised, but he was also quite angry about it. And, you know, I have to really give kudos to Mrs. Fryben and Mrs. Lynch for respectfully talking tonight to the board, because, again, I watched their last committee, Parks and Rec Committee meeting, and I was really appalled by Councilman Etzel's suggestion that the committees show up at this meeting to shame the village into giving back the fees. So, I really, with all due respect, they handle themselves like professionals and courteously, and I wish that it would be that way going back to, I'll say, 2018 and before. The other thing I wanted to point out is, you know, there's so much talk about the pool. Well, the bond was supposed to be $450,000 for the pool, that's what they decided on. And then after COVID, another $400,000 was added into that. So, I can't really buy into the need for the parkland fees at $45,000, like you said, Tim, going back to the town, when they have an additional $400,000 that they said they had to put in there in case it went over budget. Well, the $450,000 already had built-in 10% for cost overruns, so.
You mean 4.5 million, Sandy?
Excuse me?
4.5 million, right, you're saying 450,000?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I meant it was 4.5 million.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and then additional $400,000 was put in for the actual bond. Okay. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, but I thought you were saying 450,000 and then $400 was added, I just wanna make sure. I got it right, that's okay.
Sorry, if I did, I meant 4.5 million and then an additional $400,000. So, comparing the $400,000 to the $45,000 in parkland fees, it just doesn't make sense. But in any case, that's all my comments, except for I would like to thank every board member for, again, being the continent professionals and being so respectful regardless of what's thrown at you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy, really appreciate that on behalf of the rest of the board. And I wanna thank you and especially you and Mrs. Kraus for your institutional memory with regard to what goes on around the village and the town preceding that, and to come up with these factoids that, I was on the board and I didn't remember that, but I appreciate your memory on that.
Are you saying I'm old, Tim?
Not at all, I am just saying you have.
That's what I heard.
With regard to what happens around you, not at all. I'm looking at the list, and I believe that was everybody, so I think we can now go to board member comment. I'd first like to thank the We Are Woodbury Group, especially trustees Jacomaza and Gomez for their impressive efforts in the various cleanup projects that they've done throughout the village in recent weeks. Their efforts have not gone unnoticed and are truly appreciated by many, and including myself. There are 12 days left before the election on November 3rd, and early voting starts this weekend on Saturday. As I mentioned at the last meeting, last year we had about 35% of the approximately 6,900 registered voters in Woodbury exercise their right to vote. We must do better as a community. The Orange County Board of Elections website has information regarding when and where you can vote, either by early voting or on Election Day, and lists of candidates running, and frequently answered questions that you can peruse. You can find that information at orangecounty.gov.com. The weekend after next, we roll the clocks back an hour mark in the end of daylight savings time for this year. As a result of this change, as well as the approaching winter, it's gonna be getting dark earlier. Obviously, we all know that. There's still people walking throughout the community as well as people walking their dogs. Please, when you're driving through the community after it's dark now, be watchful for pedestrians and drive safely on our streets. As a reminder, the speed limit is 30. Thank you and have a good evening. So, we will go now to trustee Graziano.
Hi, thank you everybody for coming. I'd first like to start off tonight, and I'll jump on the let's thank Rob bandwagon. I wanna give a shout-out to Rob and his crew for the great job they've done paving roads along.
That's right, release the balloons.
From the beginning of that job to the end of that job, the attention to detail has been absolutely fantastic. I drive down there every day in my commute to work, the traffic plans have been crisp, safety was great. Everyone has worn all required PPE, which is close to my heart being, you know, a utility guy. So, I just wanna give you guys a shout-out, and your whole department is, it was great work and everything you were doing there. As far as the rest of my comments go, you know, we've heard a lot of rhetoric lately from some people about getting along and working together, which is very interesting to me. Getting along and working together doesn't mean doing what one person or one side demands. It means give and take on both sides and making decisions that better Woodbury as a whole. Insults, screaming, and false accusations do not foster an environment of trust. What is law is law, and what was in the IMA and what was fairly negotiated back in 2014 is what is in the IMA. If this board were to behave like others have, we should have been asking for a refund of all money that was actually sent since 2014. That is no different than asking for the bond payment in the lawsuit settlement. But we're not gonna go down that road. It's a vanity position, and it only hurts the taxpayer in the end. That is a game we as a village board do not and will not ever participate in. I also find it interesting that the town has a liaison to the village board who lauds themselves on bringing people together, yet has never once reached out to a single trustee to ask a question or start any dialogue about a single issue they may or may not have had. In fact, history has proven the exact opposite. Instead of communicating, they launch lawsuits. Instead of discussion, they sit by and nod through insults and lies. Some even mispronounce names purposely in a passive-aggressive and non-professional way. This is far from working together to better our community. Of course, we wanna work together and get along, but again, that doesn't mean we are required to kowtow to anyone else either. The first step in making things better is respect, but that must be mutual and not born out of self-declared sense of superiority. There's a huge difference between cooperation and pretentious demands. I am more unwilling to work with anyone, but it has to be as equals, and we will not acquiesce to threats or one-sided demands, and we most certainly will not be shamed into anything that is not legally correct. You can't claim the moral high ground and try and convince people you had to sue your own taxpayers because you felt a procedure wasn't followed correctly, then turn around and bitterly complain when the other side finds an actual procedure not being done correctly and simply rectifies it. Not starting any necessary litigation, mind you, just corrects the issue and moves on. That's what a group of professionals are supposed to do. As far as communication from this point forward, Tara and I made this a central issue in our campaign last year. One of the things we really wanted to do was have a once-a-month combined town-village board meeting where we each took 20 to 30 minutes to complete our required ministerial business, then spent the balance of the meeting listening to the public. Unfortunately, like so many other things in 2020, COVID had other plans. While the pandemic stifled this idea for now, I still think it's a great opportunity for the future to present our community with a united front and an opportunity for our residents to hold us accountable simultaneously. We can and should get along and work together. It just takes two entities wanting to stand side-by-side as equals to make that happen. We have always been ready to do that. Ask yourself if everyone else is deeply committed to do the same. Thank you, stay healthy, and have a great night.
Thank you, Chris, trustee Gomez.
I don't have much to say after that, for all of us. So, I just wanna take the time to say thank you to everyone for coming out. A reminder that, like the mayor said, this is the last meeting before the election on November 3rd. Please go out and vote. I hope that both Andrew and I have earned your vote on November 3rd. But no matter how you vote, no matter who you choose to vote for, please go out and vote. Great night, and as always, stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Jesus.
Also, thank you, Rob, for picking up all that garbage after we've cleaned up. You guys, excellent, thank you so much.
You'll have to thank Rob, come on.
Trustee Bjork.
Thank you, Rob, we appreciate you picking up our garbage on Sunday. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening and for this spirited discussion. We do appreciate it, regardless of how you feel. It's always important to voice your concerns and make your stance known. Each member of this village board brings a different area of expertise with them, and we individually have different passions and goals, but collectively, we are strong, independent, and work incredibly hard for the people of Woodbury. This is our last board meeting before our fate to continue to serve together is determined by you, the voting public. And I just wanna take a few minutes to speak about two gentlemen up on this board who are on the ballot for reelection as village trustee in less than two weeks. I've come to really get to know them over these last several years of my being a Woodbury resident. And I can tell you, both are our class acts. I first met Jesus when we were both volunteering for a PTA event at Smith Clover Elementary School after my family and I just moved to Woodbury. Our daughters are the same age, so it turned out that we would be spending a lot of time together over these next several years. What I have learned over that time is that Jesus is a deeply principled man, one who is hardworking, fair, and stands by his word. He offers this board a unique perspective as a former law enforcement officer, and is often the voice of calm and reason. In case you haven't noticed, we are a very opinionated bunch, and Jesus levels us out. His judgment is spot-on, and his ability to quickly assess and read a situation is remarkable. If there is someone who needs assistance, Jesus is one of the first to step up and volunteer. He is community-minded and has next to unbreakable. He is community-minded and has next to unbreakable, an unbreakable uplifting spirit. Jesus is a man of strong character and one of the most honest and straightforward people that I know. I knew about Andrew's community service endeavors and his service on the Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals prior to my actually meeting him in person. I first met Andrew when he was walking his petitions to run for village trustee in 2018, and needless to say, we spent the better part of an hour discussing how beautiful life in Woodbury is and the challenges we face as a community. I immediately knew that Andrew and I were a lot alike. We will always fight for what is right, and for the life of us, we cannot stop talking. Andrew is one of the hardest-working people I have ever had the pleasure of knowing, and serving next to him on this board has been eye-opening and quite a learning experience for me. I have watched him as he tirelessly responds to residents' concerns one at a time, as they email, text, and call him multiple times a day. I have watched as he continuously solicits feedback from our residents, asking, what can we as a board do better? You see, for Andrew, the status quo was never acceptable, and he's always looking to adapt, change, and improve whatever the village is doing. I find that honorable and commendable. He is a man that has an unparalleled work ethic and someone who is always willing to lend a helping hand. It is rare to find even one individual cares the way that Jesus and Andrew care, but this village is lucky to have found both and for both to be willing to serve as elected officials. These two selfless, caring, and hard-working board members want to continue doing the work that they sought out to do two years ago, and I for one think that they have done an outstanding job. I want to thank both you, Team G and G, for giving so much of yourselves to this village and that you have made this place a wonderful place to live and that you continue to give back to our community in every way that you possibly can, and I wish you both the very best in the upcoming election. Thank you all very much and have a great night.
You're here.
Thank you, Tara. Trustee Jacomaza.
Thank you, Tara. That was, thank you.
My eyeballs are sweating.
I would like to start by saying what a pleasure it has been to serve for my neighbors these last two years, almost two years. It has been my honor and privilege to do so. It's a lot of work. I think I was talking to our building inspector about this earlier in the week when I sat down with him, and I think it was Kate Luciani, actually, about another project for this We Are Woodbury, and, you know, when you break down the amount of hours you work and what you basically get paid, you're probably making about eight cents an hour to do this job. So I don't look at it as a job. I look at it as my pleasure to try to work with this team of individuals to make this community better. I chose to run two years ago because I saw a need to run. There was going to be changes on the board, and I wanted to be part of those changes. I've been truly blessed over the course of this two years now, almost two years, to work with a great group of individuals. And when I decided to run, I, you know, I had decided that there was only one person I would run with, and that was Jesus Gomez. I'm very fond of saying that Jesus and I are very much two different people. You know, there's a yin and a yang between us. I am more the loudmouth, extroverted, I don't know, you could just go on and on, whereas Jesus is just a level-headed, nicest guy you're ever going to meet. You meet him and you feel like you've known him for 20 years, and I couldn't have made, it was the best decision I ever made next to my wife to run with him. He, you know, he came onto this board, he didn't know zoning code, he didn't know, but he has made sure that he does know these things. He came here with a passion for his community, a community that he has been here longer than I have. He started his tenure here in Highland Lake Estates and then moved on to Country Crossing. And if you're his neighbors up there with Jesus and how he treats his neighbors up there, he's like one of them. He really is, because he's respectful, he's just a really decent guy, and it has been my pleasure to kind of work with him and work with Tara and CJ and Tim and Mike Queenen and Tom Flood these last two years as your village trustee. My hope is that we've earned another term to continue doing the work that this board has really been doing for some time now. So I thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank my buddy, Jesus Gomez, who, like I said, is just awesome. And thank you and good night. That's it. Go out and vote, people.
Thanks, Andrew. We'll go to Desiree and then Rob, and I'm going to ask one of you to speak about the recycling day, the electronic recycling day. I know it's after our next meeting, but I think it's shortly thereafter, so, Desiree?
I just, am I on?
Yeah, you're just not moving.
Okay. Oh, well, that's my internet up here, sorry. I just want to say something that's not been said enough, that Rob Wyatt is an awesome guy.
Did I forget to mention that Rob Wyatt's an awesome guy?
You did. You didn't mention it.
Awesome.
Thank you, Rob. And during the meeting, I got a text saying that he, the shirt he's wearing looks like he just came from Orange County, too. So that's all I have to say, and I'll let Rob talk about the electronic event since it is his event.
Okay. Well, you, Rob.
Wow, this is a tough act to follow here, all written speeches, everything. November 14th, we'll be having our electronic shredding event at the highway department from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We will be practicing safe distancing. When people do come, please stay in your car. We will take everything out of your car for you, and I hope to see everyone there.
Thank you, Rob. All right, I don't see any other department heads left on the meeting.
But I just want to thank Rob, too, just.
Rob, what color is that shirt, Rob?
Sorry, Kelly, do you have anything else that you want to bring up?
It's peach. Just to thank Rob, other than that, I'm good.
You're bringing peach back, Rob. Bringing peach back. There you go.
I love Kelly as an attorney, she goes with it.
Okay. So with all that said, and nothing else on the agenda, I'd like a motion and a second for the chairman, please. Trustee Bjurk with the motion, trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion?
Rob.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you for attending.